Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening and welcome to the April 1st, 2019 Board of Selectmen meeting. On the agenda, we have an executive session at 6:30 or before, we shall reconvene in open session. We will then have public service announcements, 6:35 we have a poll hearing, National Grid, Ridgeway and Glen Ridge Road. 7:00 PM we have another public hearing for a fuel storage permit, DeLeo Gas Incorporated. And we have two requests for one day license, liquor license. We have a request to vote to sign the Arbor Day proclamation. And we have a request to approve special use permit for Big Alum Pond Bass Fishing Festival. We have two resignations and we have a public vote to sign the fire department union contract. And then we have a request for an appointment to the planning board administrative assistant position, town administrators' updates, old business, new business, correspondence, approval of minutes, citizens forum, and then we adjourn. Mary, do you have the...
I do. I'll make a motion pursuant to MASH General Lodge, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3, to discuss DPW union negotiations where the Chair of the Board of Selectmen declares that discussion in an open session would have a detrimental effect on the position of the town and for the approval of minutes and to reconvene in open session.
Okay, and I so declare.
Yes.
Is there a second, though?
Second, second.
Priscilla, how do you vote?
Yes.
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 And I vote yes. Okay. We're moving to the...
Okay.
Okay. I mean, we've done these before. Does anybody have any question on it? It's for the farmers.
Yeah.
It's the Blumfield Winery. Winery, it is considered a farmer's product, according to the state. The only thing she doesn't have is the hours of operation.
For the associated with the bonfire and...
Yeah, but the...
For the market?
Yeah.
I think it goes nine to one typically to farmers market, but I don't want to get there a little bit earlier.
Well, depending on how we vote, we can put it in contingent on getting the hours from our...
I think it runs nine to one for the farmers market.
Yeah.
Because it used to go to two, but I think they pushed it back.
Okay. Well, we can get those times. But she does have two different requests, so the first request was for the farmers market. Any questions, comments, somebody willing to make a motion then to approve it?
I just have a question. I have a question. Last year, this came before us and we didn't have our bylaw in place yet, and we turned a gentleman down. If he were to come back, if we were to approve this and that gentleman were to come back, is it okay to have two on the common?
Yeah, there's no...
I just didn't want to shut him out.
Yeah, no, no, no.
I believe he is here, has applied.
Oh, good.
Yeah, I don't know if he's the same one.
Okay, cool.
Another gentleman. Okay, is somebody willing to make a motion then?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Stain?
I don't...
No, I know, Mary.
Alcohol in the common, I know. So I'm just, I don't want to vote against it, I'll just have stain for now.
Okay. Okay, and now for her request for the one day liquor license for the community bonfire. Again, there's no hours of operation. Oh, on that one, we should have tagged on contingent upon getting the hours.
Yeah.
Who made the motion, Priscilla? Is that okay?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
It was 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM?
We think.
I think that's when the farmers market runs.
And that's what the other application for farmers market...
Says.
It's 9:00 AM to 1:00.
The community bonfire has no date, is that the one?
Right.
That's coming up?
Yes.
Yeah, but there's no date on it, and again, there's no hours.
Because this should have a date, I mean, that's...
Oh, yeah.
That's fixed, yeah.
Yeah. So why don't we hold off on this, Janae, until we get the date and time on the bonfire one? Okay. Okay, then we do have the...
What is the next meeting after this?
22nd.
Okay, because I think it's coming up, I just, the date eludes me now, but the bonfire is coming up in April.
Isn't it in April sometime?
It's coming up, I want to say April 25th.
24th, I think.
April 24th, yeah, so...
Is that a Tuesday?
I was talking about that with Kevin today.
Mm-hmm.
It's the 24th.
Is that a Tuesday?
24th?
Yeah.
Sound right?
Yeah, a Wednesday?
It's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday? Is that when the bonfire is, on a Wednesday? I thought I had seen Thursday, but I could be very wrong.
I thought it was April 25th. I should know.
Maybe right then, I mean, I was just trying to remember the date.
Okay, Janae's looking it up.
Because I know it's an evening event and we could insert hours because I don't want to not have a meeting.
It's the 25th.
The 25th, that's what I thought. So we will have a meeting before then.
That's a Thursday?
Yeah.
Thursday? We could, can't we do it if we now know the date?
Oh, yeah, sure. Does anyone have any question on it? Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
Excuse me, just the hours? The hours?
The hours is all we need.
Right. Okay. So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Four, zero, one. Okay. And then we have the second request for the farmers market one from...
Bay State Brewing Company.
Bay State Brewing Company. Gentleman wasn't going to come in, Janae, that's okay. Does anybody have any question on that one? Somebody willing to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, four, zero, one. Okay, let me check these off. Okay, then we have a request to sign the Arbor Day proclamation. Says, whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska and is now observed throughout the nation and the world. Whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our community increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, and whereas Sturbridge has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree planting ways. Now therefore, the Board of Selectmen of Sturbridge do hereby proclaim April 28th, 2019, as Arbor Day in the Town of Sturbridge. We urge all citizens to support efforts to care for our trees and woodlands, support our town's community forestry program, and plant trees to gladden the hots and promote the well-being of present and future generations. Is there a motion to sign the proclamation?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, five, zero. Okay, we still have time. Okay, then we have a request for a special use permit for fishing at Big Alum on September 7th for the hours of 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Okay, we've had a request just about yearly from this Mass Bass Alliance. Anyone have any questions? Someone want to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five to nothing. Okay, then we have a letter from Chief Ford. It's in reference to accepting a letter of resignation from part-time dispatcher Taylor Plumley, and he's recommending that we accept the resignation. So moved. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, she did write a very nice letter. Okay, then we have a letter from Ashley Piazek, giving her two-week notification of resignation as administrative assistant to the Conservation Department. Any questions, comments?
So moved.
There's a lot of exiting out of that building.
Yeah.
Second.
Yeah, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, again, five to nothing. Okay, let's see. Okay, now we did take a vote in executive session originally to sign the fire department union contract, but we need to make a motion in...
Just note that, actually Jeff pointed out to me, there's a, the date on Article 40 still has the old date. If you look on page 35, do you have a copy with you?
Yes.
It says July 1st, 2015 through June 30, 18. It should be July 1st, 18 through June 30, 21. And that first paragraph and their termination date should be June 30, 2021. So I just had to make those edits, I had to make those edits.
Okay. So then, is there a motion then to sign it with the amended date?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, whoops. Good eyes, Jeff. Okay, next we have a request for the appointment of Janae Lacy to the Planning Department Administrative Assistant Position. Any questions?
No, do we have to accept that?
I've always wondered that.
You think he's just going to walk out of here like that? No, that's not going to happen.
It's all Ted's fault.
It's Ted's fault, I know, he's done a lot of things.
Recommended the appointment.
It's my fault. I'm sorry to see you leave. I think you've done a great job in the short time you've been here. You're personable, you're efficient, you're everything we could ask for, and I'm really not happy about this transfer, but I am happy for you, and if it's what you want, that's really the important thing here.
But you'll only be across the street, so...
I have to say diddle to that, you know, but I'm very fortunate that she was here.
Oh, I know, she helped.
Definitely kept me going.
It's not nice, Ted, to do that to Jeff right away.
I know, it's poor Jeff.
I was shocked equally.
So was I when I saw this.
She has a background in science, so...
Our town planner will be very...
Happy.
Happy and fortunate to have you as her assistant.
I actually blame Charlie, Chairman of the Planning Board.
He had nothing to do with the appointment. It's your appointment.
Charlie Blanchard's fault, yes.
It's just Jean's recommendation, but it's your appointment and we... So is there a motion to approve?
I suppose.
So moved.
Second?
A second, yeah. No one wanted to.
Nobody wants to.
More discussion? All in favor reluctantly?
Good luck, Janae, we're glad you're not leaving the town.
We're going to try to do a transition, you know, transition in workable places.
Yeah.
Do we have any, uh, manager, do we...
Yes.
Do we have any bites on anybody filling in this position yet? No.
I don't know of anybody, I don't know of any...
Has it been, I don't even know if it's been advertised yet.
I'm going to post it tomorrow.
Tell them they can apply by July 1st.
We can't stretch it out that long.
Ted will serve his interim.
You're not ready to retire.
You don't want that.
Handwriting.
You can move from one office to the next.
His handwriting leaves a lot to be desired.
It is a pretty busy.
Okay, it is 6:35 and we do have a poll hearing, National Grid. Mary, could you please read the newspaper notes?
The Town of Sturbridge Board of Selectmen, in accordance with MASH General Lodge, Chapter 148, Section 13, hereby give notice that a public hearing will be held on April 1st, 2019, at 7:00 PM at the Sturbridge Town Hall, 308 Main Street, Sturbridge, Mass, on the application of DeLeo... Did I say that correctly? DeLeo Gas for a license for storage tanks for flammable materials located... Is this the right...
No.
No, I'm not, I'm not. On the National Grid.
I'm sorry, as soon as I started, I'm like, that's not correct. Okay, hold on. Town of Sturbridge, National Grid has made a petition to the Sturbridge Board of Selectmen to install one JO pole beginning at a point approximately 170 feet east of the center line of the intersection of Ridgeway and Glen Ridge Road and continuing approximately 35 feet in a northern direction. National Grid to install P-584, 35-foot pole with anchor guy, guy wire to support P-5, which is supported on a tree. The poll hearing will take place on Monday, April 1, 2019, at 6:35 PM at the Sturbridge Town Hall, 308 Main Street, Sturbridge, and it's dated March 21, 2019.
That is correct.
That was correct. I got to the bottom before I figured it out.
He was confused too. Okay, could you please introduce yourself?
My name is Jeff Sylv, I work for National Grid as an engineer.
Okay, and would you explain why you're doing this?
There's an existing tree guy that is on the property of 12 Glen Ridge Road, and that tree is leaning, about to come down. So our course of action is to install a pole and guy it through different means, which would be the stub pole guy and a sidewalk anchor in front of 12 Glen Ridge Way, Road.
Okay, questions from the board?
P-4, P-5, and P-6 are, they're not moving, they're at their time. The only new pole is the guy pole, which is...
Across the street.
P-5-84.
Correct.
Usually we require poles to be indicated in the application, a distance from the edge of pavement.
Typically, we put them three to four feet off of the edge of the pavement.
Yeah. I think, you know, in the approval, I think we should specify how many feet our DPW director has in the pass, and four to six feet.
Yeah, we've always with the stipulation, if possible.
The problem with getting that four to six feet is 12 Glen Ridge Road has a wall, which is approximately five feet from there, so we kind of need a buffer zone, and I wanted to try to get the anchor off of their property and just put it in the sidewalk, which is why the pole is going to be a little bit closer towards the street with a sidewalk anchor in case people want to walk through the sidewalk, they're not crossing a angled guy. It's actually...
Yeah, I didn't... See?
No, we've approved them before when they couldn't do it.
It's a tough spot.
Yeah, but I mean, we could still put the language in if at all possible, which means if it's not possible...
Absolutely.
You don't have to do it.
So what's the distance between the sidewalk and the edge of pavement?
I believe it's approximately six to seven feet. When I went out there, there was snow on the ground, so I couldn't get a...
Side to tell.
Couldn't get an exact measurement, but I believe it was like six to, six to seven feet, which would be, the pole would be about three feet, and then I would put sidewalk anchor possibly if the means were there to do it.
Okay, I...
I meant Jerry? We will have public input after, okay.
Like I said, when I went out there, there was snow on the ground, so what I perceived to be a sidewalk was full...
You know, it's just ground, it's land, we don't have...
Was full of snow.
Not many sidewalks in town.
Okay.
But, no, I understood what you meant, though.
Yeah, but I'm saying usually our minimum, I think we would have to require a minimum, otherwise it'd have to get the approval of the DPW director for anything less than our minimum distance, okay?
The major problem with that is that tree is starting to put pressure on our pole and leaning over.
I would think our DPW director could either approve it or deny it, you know, any... But we don't want the poles close to the edge of pavement, that's...
Oh, it's understandable.
It's a safety policy.
Correct.
Plowing and everything.
Yeah, so...
Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, it is a public hearing, anyone in the audience have questions or comments? Could you come up and use the mic, please? That's for the people at home, we can hear, but... Any mic standing or sitting?
Hi, Bob Dukeley, I am the property owner at 12 Glen Ridge. I don't care how far back he puts the pole into my property, as long as he takes the tree down where the guy wire is, because it's starting to go. That's why I started this process about two years ago, because I couldn't cut the tree down, starting to hang over my house, starting to pull poles, so...
So if you don't mind a...
You can go back as far as you want.
Okay.
I don't care where you put it, to the flowerbed, I don't care.
Fantastic.
Take care of that tree for me.
Absolutely.
I'm good.
Sounds like, sounds like it's solved that problem.
Let's hear a couple more.
That takes care of that. Does anyone else in the audience have a comment or question? Is there a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I wish they were all that easy.
I'll make a motion to approve...
Can I ask a question? Where are the wires going?
Jerry, can you use the mic, please, the people at home?
Oh, people at home, it's interesting, only putting...
And introduce yourself for the record, please.
I'm Geraldine for Pecor, I live at 11 Glen Ridge Road in Sturbridge, right across the street. So you're going to put that pole at the end of...
On his property.
Yeah, yeah, right. But where are the wires going though? I mean, what is the purpose of putting that pole there?
So what happens is, as you can see in the diagram, so because there's a corner here...
Yeah.
We have pressure on the pole coming this way, so you have to hold that pole back, which is...
So this is the pole on outside of the street, 11?
Correct. So if we don't put a guy wire here, it's going to tumble over into your property.
Oh, so you're putting a pole here...
As a support.
To hold this pole on.
Correct.
Oh, okay. So this is just an aid, is...
It's exactly...
Are you, I thought you were going to...
No, ma'am.
Put wiring up.
No, ma'am.
So it's just an assistant pole?
It's an assistant.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, it makes it so complicated.
Okay, Mike, you wanted to add something to the motion?
I was just, wanted to make a motion to approve the pole permit application by National Grid for dislocation at 15 Glen Ridge Road, provided that the pole be located at least four feet from the edge of pavement unless otherwise approved by the Director of Public Works.
As of now, the pole's going to be on his property.
It can be anywhere.
Yeah.
So it's not even...
Yeah, but in the permit...
But in the permit...
Okay, I got you, okay.
You're not restricted.
We just want to be consistent with this permit and the next permit and next permit after that.
Understood.
Our minimum distance from the edge of pavement unless otherwise approved by the Director of Public Works.
Understood.
Right, you're not restricted, you could put it in his living room if you wanted.
You can put it 20 feet back, that's fine.
Okay.
Is there a second then? Is there a second to that then?
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Jeez, I really thought we were going to talk.
No, you can vote next Monday at the town election. Okay, is it six? No, it's not seven yet.
They just say that.
Some of these public hearings go a long time. Hey, we may break a record tonight.
I know, if we didn't have that second one set at seven, we would...
Yeah, we would have been out of here.
Show the planning board. Okay, next we have a town administrator's update. No.
I was going to, I was going to do...
Yeah, I mean, he was there.
Absolutely.
You may add if you wish.
Does that have a much shorter update?
This is kind of short for me, too, because I was gone half the time. I was away, as you know, in Los Angeles. But on the 23rd, there was a meeting with the Selectmen in the Finance Committee to go over the budget for FY '21. And we had some departments here as well, Public Safety, who addressed their budget, their overview. And this is the first few steps for the budget process. At this point in time, the Finance Committee is now meeting with all the departments and going through the budget. As you all know, I'm basically telling this for the public. And so I was present. It was a good meeting. I, once again, have to thank Barbara Berry. She did a very good job putting together this, did a lot of work on that. So that was the budget hearing. Host community agreements. We received word from the planning board that the town has two applicants for host communities, for recreational marijuana facilities. One is the Caregivers Patient Connection on 214 Charlton Road. And the second is 353 Organic, which is on 36th Main Street. And both firms do comply with the zoning regulations for the establishments to be there. The town has three permits, in which I believe one is, you already have one for medical. So if these pass and are adopted, they would take care of your three facilities for this community. I believe they're planning on, both companies are planning to come to the next board meeting, which I believe now is going to be on the 29th, not the 22nd?
22nd.
22nd?
Yeah, not the 16th.
Okay, that's going to be on, okay, not the 16th, all right. So it's going to be on 22nd, and they want to make a presentation to the board. So I just wanted to give you an update on that. And Jean Berber, our town planner, has information, if you needed more information about the actual companies. Lastly, just, this is interesting. We had an appellate tax hearing for Fred Copes against the town of Sturbridge, and this is actually an old hearing. It was the appellate tax board in Boston, and it was for an appeal for a sewer fee that was appealed several years ago.
Yeah, 2013. Hawthorne Road.
It was denied and was through the process. It was actually, when it first came, there was, the hearing was going to happen. It was postponed till March. I thought, I would hopefully go to it. The attorney asked to hold off again because he's having a difficult time with the heir, I think it was the son or daughter
Daughter.
of the Copes's to reach to determine. The only other thing is, I talked into the Tax appellate Board afterwards, they said that hopefully we can get this resolved, either have it or end it. So that probably would be... If they have a new date, contact attorney and just, you know, say, "Look, can we get this done one way or the other?"
Sure.
That's my report.
Yeah, was anybody else on the board then?
What year was it?
213? Yeah, it was Hawthorne Road, leaking toilet. She moved out. She had people doing work, but the toilet was leaking.
Just wanted to update, because it seems to get put aside, so in case it comes up again, you know what's happening.
Okay, thank you, Ted. Okay, old business, Priscilla?
I just had a question. I just heard Ted say, "We have three permits for marijuana." I thought it was two, but obviously I'm wrong, because I know it's based on the liquor permits. I thought it was two, so if it's three, I...
Is that a question?
That may include the medical marijuana facility then?
Because it was two, I was going to say, because the medical marijuana is going to become retail real quick in the next year or so. Is that one of the three that we supposedly have?
I believe the three includes the medical.
Includes that.
Got two plus
So we have a total of three, not two permits allowed in that.
I believe that's what I heard from Jean.
Yeah.
That answered my question. Thanks. Please, no more.
Well, I
No, I'm just kidding with
Because it was like six
Yeah.
I think we had like six or seven liquor permits.
Yeah, and then there was a debate on which kind of liquor permit was it, a full liquor or packaged store or...
Okay. That answered the question.
Okay, Chase? Mike?
Yeah, I just wanted to discuss this, here, Priscilla. This is a meeting that, I guess it was a little bit premature. Matt Moselli from the Housing Partnership came before the board and wanted, he had met with the developers of the Five Leaves project, and so, and he asked if I would agree to meet with them. So I did on March 20th, and
I meant, who did you meet with the Housing Partnership, or the Five Leaves?
With Matt Mosella and the owners of Five Leaves, which is NMB reality.
I don't mean to be rude, but I do know that the chairman of the Housing Partnership has a problem, as should be, with one individual on the committee going ahead and doing things without input from the entire committee.
At the time that I met with them, I thought the entire Housing Partnership was, had requested this. And so, I agreed to meet, and so we did, and this is the results. And what I was going to say tonight was that the Housing Partnership is meeting on this matter. They should make a recommendation to the town administrator and through him, the Board of Selectmen, as to how to proceed, to see if this project can move ahead. As you recall, there is an issue about the sewer fees, the connection fees, and allegedly that's what's holding up the project, so I guess there is some interest in seeing if this can be resolved. And so, I just wanted to let you know what was going on, so the full board knew what was going on, not just me acting. I was, you know, I was just acting as an interested party for this meeting, and there's really, this is just to bring the status up to date, so we know what's going on. The project will, the comprehensive permit will expire in June, so they will have to request an extension in May. And this is just so the Board of Selectmen can know the status of the project.
You met with them on the 20th?
Yes.
Okay, because we had a meeting on the 18th where I mentioned Mr. Neal's concerns.
Were you here on the 18th?
Yes.
I thought we got the email after that.
Well, it doesn't matter anyways, but thank you for the update.
We just did, we just did the, well...
Yeah, it was March 4th. I wasn't here.
Well...
No, I mean, people would like to see it move along, and they'll have to go back to ZBA if the time
Yeah.
does expire. Okay, any other old business, Mike?
No, that's it. Just trying to bring you up to date on that project, because, you know, we haven't had any status report on it in a long time.
Mary?
No.
Okay, I do have a couple of things. The meeting on the 16th, 15th is Patriots Day. We're going to have to change it to the 22nd, because Jean wants to come in and with the marijuana and everything, so we have no public hearings scheduled for the 16th, so... I probably won't be here on the 22nd. It's the start of my holy week, so I probably won't be here. Oh, what about you, Mary?
I don't know. I like to be here for the marijuana thing.
I know, I would, too.
But I'm kind of torn as well, so I'm going to have to give that one a little bit of thought. And, hold on, I don't know if I'm going to be here at all, because I'm up for reelection, so I don't want to be presumptuous. You know, maybe if I am here, if it was the first thing scheduled, so then I could leave right after.
Would that work for you, Priscilla?
Church.
But depends how long it goes. That's my, that's my problem, too. Ted, do you think it would take much for Jean to reschedule?
I would think not.
No, okay, so why don't we?
I was asking about coming in tonight, but
Yeah, no, when the lawyer had called me, I had told him when we met.
Just so she knows that it's
Information.
It's holy week for both, for two members of the board. It's holy week that week, and it makes it hard for us to
With services and everything.
to be here, and you can't judge how long this is going to go.
Right.
It'll have a discussion, for sure.
Sure. Would you like, do you have a particular date you'd like to invite them back?
The 29th, then.
29th?
Isn't that the date at the town, I mean, isn't that the same date as the charrette?
Oh, that's right, because we weren't, well... Told you it was not going to be short. I mean, there is no hurry.
No, I know. Early May might be
So May 6th. Okay.
Thank you, Mary.
Yeah, thank you. I remembered holy week, and then I forgot it. Okay, also, we need to set up a meeting for us to go through the line item budget and the warrant articles, so that they can be passed on to the FinComs, so that the book can get published, published and everything. So Barbara would like it ASAP. So what about the week of... What about the 16th? Oh, that
That worked, but that's, I'm only
Well, that's okay, you just turned to me, Tuesdays and Thursdays, FinCom meets here. What about the 17th, because Wednesday?
That's fine. That's fine with me.
Chase, Mike, can you make it?
Yeah.
Mary?
Yeah, I mean I just don't want to
If you're reelected, can you make it?
If I'm reelected, I will come, yes.
Okay, so, any particular time you want to start early?
Yeah, sure, I'm all for it.
What about 5:30?
That's fine, even.
Chase? What about 5? Okay, let's
5 is good.
Okay, let's do 5. Um, no.
Okay.
No, we're going to do this budget one, because we don't have any public hearings scheduled or anything, so... 5 o'clock. Because I know Barbara would like to be here. She knows more about line items and the warrant articles than we do. That's right, okay. We have a couple minutes to go. Change meeting, okay. So we now have correspondence. Mary?
Hold on, is it way in the back?
Uh huh.
Correspondence dated March 25th, from the Tantasco Regional Junior High School, an invitation to Veterans Breakfast Memorial Day Ceremony, March 25th, from Cindy Forgut, from the Building Administrative Assistant, regarding, a letter regarding the Monday, March 18th, 2019 Board of Selectmen meeting during Citizens Forum. March 27th, Town of Palmer, Mass. Department of Transportation Advisory Committee. I think that's... We were copied on a letter from Jean Bouvan, but I guess it didn't come to, that was an email, but I guess that was addressed to us. I never know with correspondence, if we're copied on it, does that constitute correspondence, or only if it's addressed to us? It's kind of a
Well, we went through that, too, remember, does it have to be mailed or emailed or?
But we also got something from our town planner about the Citizens Forum as well.
Yeah.
Charrette, charrette?
The charrette.
The charrette.
Is that the charrette?
And she also sent an email regarding the Citizens Forum that Cindy Forgut is referring to.
Is it a different one?
A different, yeah.
We also got an email from Steve, I don't know how to pronounce his last name, Chennicky?
Schwinnicky.
Schwinnicky, I apologize for the mis
Oh, that's okay. I think that's how you say it.
Schwinnicky, yeah. We also got that email, too. We all got that.
Oh, that's right, right. Forgot that one. Mike, did you read the one from Palmer? I figured you'd be interested. You went to that meeting?
Yeah, I went to the charrette, and it's, it's a, it's a good example of what we hope to do on Route 15, is get a public input and get some new ideas. So hopefully, if our charrette is as successful as that one, it would be good. I think, I think that was good. John Mullen from UMass led the charrette in Palmer, and he did an excellent job.
Yeah, he had done the one here 15 years ago, too. The fun. Okay, 7
I just have another item. The Worcester Selectmen group, what date did we have that?
Oh, that would be April 17th, wasn't it?
No, I was thinking about that. Was that, it was a Wednesday.
Oh, yeah, that's
Just occurred. Was it 17th?
Yeah.
And that's before our next meeting.
Yeah.
Worcester County Selectmen's Association meeting is on April 17th, right here.
Next Wednesday is the 10th. Yeah, I mean, on the 17th, we just scheduled the budget here. I was just going to say, what about the 10th, the week before, for the budget?
That's fine with me.
Yeah, sooner the better. Okay, we should have changed that. That's right, I
I forgot about that.
Still at 5.
Me, too.
What time is that other thing?
5.
That's at 5 also?
Excuse me, 5:30.
Oh, yeah, that's the one with the light supper kind of thing. Is that the one? Yeah, okay, that's what I thought. Okay.
Wow.
And that's right here.
Yeah.
It'll be here.
At least we all got that right. Okay, it is time next public hearing.
Okay, the town of Sturbridge Board of Selectmen, in accordance with MASH General Lodge, Chapter 148, Section 13, hereby give notice that a public hearing will be held on April 1st, 2019, at 7:00 PM at the Sturbridge Town Hall, 308 Main Street, Sturbridge, Mass., on the application of Dilio gas for a license for storage tanks for flammable materials located at 51 Technology Park Road, and it's dated March 21st.
Okay, good evening. Could you please introduce yourself for the record?
Hi, I'm Jody Amadon. I'm Jody Pratt, Amadon Energy Consulting, out of Fairleigh, Vermont.
And I'm John Grunier. I am the civil engineer working with the proponent.
Okay, and could you give us a little synopsis, exactly what you want to do?
What DeLeos are proposing is to install two underground 30,000-gallon propane tanks, a 1,000-gallon pump station tank, and to store empty tanks that they would distribute to customers' homes and businesses. They would also, well, they don't care about the buildings, right?
No.
No, okay, so... And there would also be methanol stored. Part of the process and why I'm here from Vermont is I was asked to do all of the safety studies and have worked with your fire department on the study that's required, both here locally and state and federally.
Okay, questions from the board? Now, is this a new company there?
This was previously Mark Mecham's company, so this is, this actually has been, was started quite a few years ago, and for personal reasons, it was slowed, and then he sold to the DeLeo family from Worcester, Mass.
Okay, anything from the board?
I see here that the, our fire chief has signed off on the application, which to me should be good enough. But I do have a question about the 30,000-gallon tanks underground. That seems relatively large. Is that, you know, a normal size for an underground storage? I know above-ground, they have 30,000-gallon tanks, but underground is unusual.
It's a standard size for a bulk plant.
Okay.
We install many of them.
There's no one in the public, so is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, is there a motion then?
I just have a question. What kind of timeframe does this take? Like, how fast do they get installed? I have no I have no idea about this type of thing.
If all the site works comes together, it can be three weeks from start to finish.